What please stand and pledge their allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the resolve of the thirty-two justices.
Board of Commissioners, this is Tuesday, March first, 2022. The time is now seven oh four. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice that this meeting was published on December ninth, twenty twenty-one issue of the Nellie Sun, Herald News and Store Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-nineteenth pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the year twenty twenty-two had been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. Notice of Mean Revisions was published in the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two issue of the Store Ledger, Nellie Sun, Herald News and Tap Internet at nelly.net. A copy of this notices will be posted on the Nellie Town Hall Ballroom Board and a copy is on the Wild and Municipal Clerk's Office. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting and participate during the designated public conference portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dialing numbers provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
President.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patrako.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present mayor.
Thank you. We have more minutes to review this evening, so we'll move on to communications and correspondence.
Thank you mayor, we have three this evening. The first one has a social affair application from the BMW for May sixth, twenty twenty-two for their spring festival from six PM to twelve PM at their location at two seventy-one Washington Avenue. The second one is a social affair application for the Rotary Club for April ninth, twenty twenty-two for beach steak tricky trade from six PM to ten PM at forty-four Park Avenue. And the last one is a social affair application for Van Riper House for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. It's a lawn party fundraiser from twelve PM to four PM at one ninety-one River Road, the rain date of May seventh, twenty twenty-two. Need a motion please.
We'll move to the second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for communications mayor.
Thank you. We will move into reports. I have a change report for the month of February twenty twenty-two. Bill's please.
Thank you mayor. Bill list for March first, twenty twenty-two. Public affairs, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents. Revenue and finance, two million eight hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twelve cents. Public safety, fifty-five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. Public works, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand sixty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Public property, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Water utility, one hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Payroll as of Friday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Regular payroll total, one million twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars and three cents. Overtime payroll total, ninety-one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total payroll, one million one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents. For rent total of five million two hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
Will the second?
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
That's it for bills mayor.
Thank you. We will now move to take public comment on agenda items all please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should provide their name and address for record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Boardings, individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may refer his comments to the appropriate member of the Board. And there's no one to go this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, let's go start with the last this evening, Commissioner Evans.
Why not you?
Because you always go last, but I don't want you to feel like that.
Nothing specific to know, just think we all need to be careful with the Ukraine and the aggression that's going on. I think everybody has watched the news and seen people who are so committed and willing to sacrifice their life. A compliment to changing the color of the building to the initial flag of Ukraine and asking for his favor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes, thank you mayor, I also want to echo which I have in sentiments that we pray your peace, Ukraine, and that your belligerents withdraw from the region and commend you for lighting up our building. It's beautiful sight to see. Also this month is Women's History Month. Public Affairs and Health Department will be posting two panels later this month with women leaders in our community speaking about their life, their careers and what they've done and some of the challenges they've encountered and hopefully can inspire some of our young women out there, but also at the same time an opportunity to thank other women leaders in our community. I'll make mention on that list this month, but it's the two days from March fifteenth, March twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Something official, but my prayers are with the people of Ukraine and I think good should always defeat evil.
Also.
I will also say something about Ukraine as well. Commissioner Scarpelli, your break, that was my mother's famous saying, good always prevails, I think it will forever again. However, I'm gonna watch my tone tonight. People has a story, but with proven to them to these civilians over there blown up, armed over there with children is disgusting and really funny to me. So I pray for these, mayor, I was in a request before, we can have a moment of silence for all the children. I'll be praying for them lost, as hard as sensible or not.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make my comments that will, I'll speculate it. Number one, I'd also like to echo everyone's remarks. And I'd like everyone to know that the buildings will lit the colors of the Ukraine on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners that have been sent into that. I thank everyone for that and I'd like to condemn the atrocious act of aggression by the Russian military on the Ukraine. It's like fighting your own family. It's unbelievable what's going on there and like everyone else has said, our prayers and best wishes are with the people of the Ukraine. And we hope that this is a trust and very quickly, so once again, let's have that moment. Thank you. I have a couple of other announcements this evening. Today I was fortunate enough to be able to participate once again in the Read Across America program in the Nellie School System. I want to commend the principal of that school, Mr. Carney, and the entire administration for beginning this. It's the entire read, I feel, many people will also be participating. Once again, wonderful event, seeing our youngsters there, I'm just, it was very rewarding for me personally. I'd also like to congratulate Jayden Aiden, who participated in the nine U out group shoot. He is our New Jersey state champion and he's moving on, so Jayden, congratulations to you. And the last announcement I have is this Saturday, April fifth, we have our St. Patrick's Day parade. All right, it steps off at one o'clock and the vest your mask begins at ten AM at St. Mary's. And that's all I have. So we will move on to ordinances. We have no introductions this evening, but we do have an ordinance on the second reading. And this is an ordinance providing for technology, infrastructure improvements and related services in and by the town of Nellie, County Vestas, State of New Jersey, appropriating three hundred and two thousand. Therefore, this has been introduced on the week end, Mr. Evans and myself. I will now open the public hearing for coffee. So no one willing to come? Wait, I'd like to move it closer.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have.
Sorry, we have.
Rory Moore, one eleven Passaic Avenue, Nellie, New Jersey. I believe, Mr. Evans, is this your ordinance? I believe.
Thank you mayor.
Please, please respond.
Yeah, I join in your with Mayor Tucci, yes.
The, you have nothing listed. You're spending three hundred and two thousand dollars on what? And it really doesn't say anything. When I opened this, it looks like you were just putting racks and servers in. My question is, why aren't you using AWS, which is Amazon Web Services, which is substantially cheaper and much more secure? So I was curious, where was the thought process in this decision?
I'll start. This was a recommendation that was presented to us by our IT department. It's to purchase four new servers for our core network to facilitate all the activities of police fire, town hall, DPW, and parks and public property. Our existing quarter is seven years old and you're taking advantage of an eighty thousand dollar discount by purchasing it now as opposed to waiting for the twenty-two. Mr. Bruno, you got anything?
No, I think you were very clear on what we're doing. Mr. Moore, AWS services is something that the town will have to consider at some point. We have to do more research for us because we need to consider something.
My main concern is AWS is much cheaper, I mean, just across the board. You're in my wheelhouse right now and everybody is moving to AWS, even the military has moved there. The three hundred and two thousand, you're actually purchasing racks and servers, which when you purchase instances through AWS are much, much cheaper. You don't have to own your own racks and you always have a better rack. It's always there, the servers are always updated. In fact, the ones you're purchasing probably have Intel processors on it. And right now AWS is far superior as far as servers are concerned. So I was wondering, I understand you said you want to do a bit more research, but where was that research process? You don't see that in here, which would have substantially helped the township in the long run.
Mr. Moore, thank you for your comment. We made a decision to purchase this equipment. It will not result in any new financing or debt to the town as a result because we utilize previous credits.
You could have saved three hundred and two thousand dollars.
I appreciate your comment.
Is it go, what process? If you're not using it now, when are you going to use the process to decide to move over to AWS?
Mr. Moore, if you'd like, I appreciate you putting your comments in writing and sending it to me and I'll forward them to our IT department for consideration moving forward.
I could send that to Jason just as easily.
Or you can do that also. Anything else or something?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for your comments. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, if there's no one else willing to be heard on this ordinance, if there's none, let's take a motion and close call here. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Who's the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we will move into resolutions, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you mayor. I have a couple of items this evening. First one, as I spoke about earlier, we were in the birthday of Women's History Month. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the month of March was designated by the United States Congress as National Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month promotes teaching of women's history, achievements of women throughout the world. Whereas it's important for the residents of the township to recognize the growing contributions and achievements of women of the township of Nellie and State of New Jersey and therefore be a result of the Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, called upon all citizens of Nellie to observe the month of March as National Women's History Month twenty twenty-two. Bush time encourage all residents to recognize the courageous, powerful women who fought for ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution on August twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty, and celebrate all women past, present and present who rendered service to our nation, our state and our township. Also therefore be a result of Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie's law on citizens of Nellie to observe International Women's Day on day March seventh, a global day celebrating the economic, political and social achievements of women past, present and future since nineteen eleven. Be a further result, our residents are encouraged to join Nellie Department of Public Affairs, Nellie Public Schools and Nellie Women's Network recognizing and celebrating the lives and careers of local women at twenty twenty-two Women's History Month panel discussion on Tuesday, March fifteenth and Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at seven again at the Nellie High School auditorium. So.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Second one I have on this evening is to honor the Medal of Honor of Steve Medal of Honor. Whereas in eighteen sixty-two, the Honored Medal of Honor was created thanks to resolution introduced by Senate Committee on Military Affairs, Senator Harry Wilson. In nineteen fifteen, Navy, Marine Corps and Coast Guard members were authorized to receive Medal of Honor. By the mid nineteen sixty, the United States Air Force had its own version of the Medal of Honor. Whereas there were medals awarded that served at a time as former of the Medal of Honor. These included the Fidelity of the dying order who lays out the only free person associated with capturing a spy, associated with Benedict Darnold. Another precursor to Medal of Honor was George Washington's badge of military merit. The last code of Medal of Honor was Medal of Valor approved by the Special Air Company in eighteen sixty-one. Whereas Medal of Honor is awarded to only military members. It's awarded by Congress and it's also known as the Russian Medal of Honor. Whereas National Medal of Honor Day is observed every year on the March twenty-fifth and dedicated to Medal of Honor recipients. Each branch of the US Military Forces Medal of Honor holds, but established himself conspicuously by gathering and trepidly above and beyond the call of duty and therefore be a result of Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, to recognize and celebrate National Medal of Honor Day. So.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The third one I have on this evening is for our Naval Reserves. Whereas Naval Reserves established in March third, nineteen fifteen, ordered to help prepare the nation for its entrance to World War One. Whereas since the inception of the National Reserve, it has given all citizens of the area community work part-time in the Navy. Whereas the United States Naval Reserve has awarded fifty-nine thousand records protecting our oceans and ensuring our safety of all Americans. Whereas the township of Nellie is thankful and is proud to support the United States Naval Reserve on the occasion of its Naval Reserve's hundred and eighth birthday, the township has requested sacrificed and served nation in the Naval Reserve with thanks and recognized Naval Reserve Red Veteran, while Nellie calling today. And therefore be a result of Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, to recognize and celebrate the Naval Reserve's hundred and eighth birthday, so.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas meeting in Paris on March fifteenth, nineteen nineteen, Paris offered the American Legion of the World Health Society provide American work on better resources and assistance. Whereas since the inception of the American Legion has provided more time better and wider way of different resources and advocacy programs. Whereas the American Legion, they have over thirty members making one of the largest work time better for a nation, country. Whereas the Legion of American Legion's hundred and fourth birthday attached to a bank, American Legion for its services is provided to both Nellie and Nellie veterans throughout the years. And therefore be a result of Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, to recognize and celebrate the United American Legion's hundred and fourth birthday, so.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. That's all, thank you mayor.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you mayor. Be resolved by Board of Commissioners in the township of Nellie, County Vestas, State of New Jersey, with the treasurer. They achieved hereby four provides three hundred payments and tax charges in the three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand sixteen cents for block forty-six oh two one twenty-five, twelve point vector C one zero three zero minus.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patrako.
Yes, whereas the township of Nellie, according to safety, has been to part of services away from council as a non-federal contract to Virginia for business event JSA, I think nineteen forty-four A, theirs twenty twenty-five. Whereas the direct of safety is determined and certified, never knew that the value of the acquisition would exceed seventeen thousand five hundred. Whereas anticipated term of this contract is January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Remained be extended as approved by the Governor of Bob. Whereas the Royal Office of Insurance, the Halleback of State level valuable air commissioners, dirty, ascended proposal indicating that provided labor council at the rate of our per hour. Whereas the firm Sherrinsky and our Halleback has completed a business entity disposal certification, which certifies that it has not been any reportable contributions of local candidate committing an attachment of company previous one year to a contract, evident to firm Sherrinsky and Halleback making any reportable contributions to the terms of the contract. Whereas the counter available from account fee dash zero one, zero one two two zero five, not exceed seven five thousand will be appropriated to that twenty-two budget and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Then certification being attached to this resolution happened for a be resolved by Board of Commissioners. Townships of Nellie authorized the contract with the firm Sherrinsky Halleback as described herein and be a further resolved at the business disposal at state certification. And termination of value replaced Halleback with this resolution and be a further resolved that the notice of this action shall be printed and copies signed on the local public contract.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Thank you mayor, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, that the township treasurer be is here live and authorized to make part of the whole situation. They authorize to refund thirty dollars option number six oh five point five one thirty twenty twenty-two. Oh gosh, if one ninety-eight AM belongs to New Jersey for a refund payment for a sizable permit for six I D. What's the, second?
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. That's all I have, thank you, Commissioner.
Be resolved by Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, New Jersey, that the Woods, reasons of harvest, forty acre, forty-nine, followed transfers of twenty twenty-one appropriation reserves be and same right hereby authorized to department of parks and public property from other insurance premiums in the amount of three thousand dollars, parks and playgrounds, salary or wages line overtime, bill like of nothing. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received in the following organizations. The Rotary Club of Nellie License number twelve dash twenty-two for an on-premise fifty fifty cash raffle on Saturday, April ninth, twenty twenty-two. The Rotary Club again the W license number thirteen twenty-two two for an on-premise merchandise raffle, for Saturday, April ninth, twenty twenty-two, with our lady in Mont Carmel. License number fourteen twenty-two for an off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle on Saturday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk of the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, State of New Jersey, that the affirmation licenses be approved and municipal clerks will authorize the issue of such. I've been personal. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nellie County Vestas, New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise or seal bits of surplus equipment as no longer can be used by the township. The equipment here is a listed below. Department of Parks and Public Property, first one is in nineteen sixty-two, Massey Ferguson MF thirty-five tractor, serial number S S zero F two twenty-six thirty-four. The second is a two thousand two GMC thirty-five hundred and five miles, fifty-seven thousand three fourteen. Be a further resolved that the equipment is available for inspection on three days between seven thirty AM and two PM. Be a further resolved that the equipment is sold as is and where it is and pictured to be received on Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two at eleven AM available time, the Commission Chambers Township Hall, Long Kennedy Drive, Nellie, New Jersey, at which time they will publicly open the break. I've been personal. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Of course, I think we found our reset, nineteen sixty-two, I think we did.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
All right, and that concludes our business for this evening. We'll now open the meeting up to the call.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should provide their name and address for record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may refer his comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, one eleven Passaic Avenue, Nellie, New Jersey. Mayor Tucci, I have two questions this evening. When can we, the township, expect to have the traffic studies to the Chicalini properties and the Diamond Spring property? Is that on a planning board anytime soon?
Mr. Moore, I'm sure both of those studies will take place in due time. As we get further along in the process, I'm sure that's something that we're going to look at.
I was just curious because I believe that there was a senior citizens that was supposed to be built or could have been built on on three, and I believe that was being held up for a traffic study as well.
I'm sure I believe it was ever a senior citizen facility rebuilt on three. It was an assisted living facility, a continuing care facility that was spoken about. And the traffic study that you speak of was for the entire build-out of the on three property so that we could gauge what the impact would be on our neighbors.
Well, don't you think that would be appropriate for us to do the same thing as far as Chicalini and Diamond Springs? You know, we're anticipating. Aren't we, aren't we condescending in a sense that we ask on three for one, but yet we're not going to produce one?
Absolutely not. If you were listening, what I said was at the appropriate time, that will be done and I'm sure they'll all be paid for by the, the role necessary set.
Okay. And my last question is, when the Chicalini property was raised, I filed an Oprah request. I asked for the abatement, the asbestos abatement and the study for it. And I was given a letter of some kind, there was no, there was no answer to my Oprah. So I opened the state of New Jersey and they said that none were filed. So that that building was raised and there was no asbestos abatement, no studies, no cleanups, nothing. So I'm just curious why we pay that kind of money to have the building raised and they didn't even follow the law? That's federal law, that's not even state law.
Mr. Moore, I don't believe that that's correct because I recall looking at the reviewing, the quotation for the raising of that building and it did in fact state that all the asbestos abatement requirements will in fact be met. And I believe there's documentation to the effect that they were affected by the contract. If you'd like to file another Oprah request, I'm sure Mr. Bruno will address that and share with you the documents that we have on file.
But you told me they exist, I will file it right now.
I'm sure you will. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Hi Commissioners, Gina Summers, one ten Saturday Avenue. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you, I'm here, I'm on the, on the board of the Van Riper House and I want to say thank you for approving our application. And I just wanted to extend an invitation, obviously. If you guys could save the date on your calendar and hopefully you can stop by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
No one else?
It seems no one else wishing to address us this evening. I believe we have a need for a short, big. I believe we have a need for a short detective session. And at which time, when we come down to the end of this session, we will not be taking any further action. So I'll entertain a motion to include the open portion. Moving. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of Public Law, 1975, permits these people to have a color for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the board of commissioners of the township of Nutley, the county of New Jersey, desire to proceed to close executive session and therefore be a resolved by the board of commissioners of the township of Nutley, move into closing executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged matters and litigation matters. Be a further resolved that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made categorically affecting the township's family pending and or anticipated legal personnel, practical matters, and other matters where they may be subject to violation by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.